November twenty-third, two thousand and twenty. In just a moment here, you will see the American flag come up on the screen. And when you do, if you would rise as you are able and join me for the pledge allegiance to the flag. Pledge allegiance. Of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Would the clerk please call the roll of the members?
Denise Hoppy.
Present.
Diddy Hutchinson.
Here.
Zachary Urban.
Present.
Rachel Haltine.
Present.
Amanda Weaver.
Here.
Corey Stites.
Present.
Leah Dozeman.
Here.
Valerie Nosler Beck is running a few minutes late, I apparently, unless someone's heard differently from her. We have a quorum, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you very much, and hopefully Ms. Nosler Beck will join us in a few minutes. We have no proclamations and ceremonies tonight. We have no minutes in your package to approve. If I hear no objections, we will let the agenda stand as noted. So ordered. We are now at our citizens' right to speak. Citizens may speak on any matter not on the agenda for a maximum of three minutes under the citizens' right to speak. We will be using the raise your hand in the Zoom format or on the telephone, you may unmute yourself and we will take comment from you on the telephone. If you would like to speak under citizens' right to speak, down at the bottom of your screen, you will see a tab marked participants. And if you will click that at the bottom of that next screen, you will see a raise hand function. If you would use that raise your hand function, we will call on you and bring you into the meeting. Ms. Shack, do we have anyone with their hand raised in the Zoom format?
Mayor, we don't have any attendees tonight.
Okay. No one on the telephone, no, no members of the public who wish to address us tonight?
Correct.
Then we will, we will end our citizens' right to speak. And we will now go to our first first item on our, on our agenda is a motion to approve funding in the amount of two hundred and fifty dollars for the purpose of funding phase three of the business stabilization program. And I've called this meeting, so I will introduce it. This is a motion to approve funding in the amount of two hundred and fifty dollars for the purpose of funding phase three of the business stabilization program. The impact of COVID nineteen on American business continues as, as state and local governments order mandatory shutdowns further complicating operations for businesses already impacted by COVID nineteen. The Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment, CDPHE, moved Jefferson County to Level Red severe risk in the COVID nineteen dial framework, effective November twentieth, two thousand and twenty at five P M. This move to Level Red imposes new restrictions, including but not limited to prohibiting indoor dining at restaurants, limiting capacity at gyms to ten percent, and continuing to limit capacity at critical and non-critical retail to fifty percent. The city distributed five hundred thousand dollars in grants to one hundred and sixty-one Wheat Ridge businesses through the Business Stabilization Program earlier this year. The city has received federal fundings from the CARES Act through Jefferson County, which is authorized to be used for business recovery grant programs. Councilmembers Haltine and Stites contacted me to call a special meeting to discuss authorizing two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for local business grants to restaurants and retailers under the same guidelines and grant committee process you used previously, including, number one, no chain or franchises, twenty-five or fewer employees, brick and mortar locations in Wheat Ridge, and current Wheat Ridge business license. I would like to yield the floor now to Councilwoman Haltine and Councilman Stites.
Thank you, Mayor Starker. I appreciate the, the introduction. I think the issue that was read captures why, you know, the urgency of this, and I appreciate everyone's time. I know this was supposed to be a night off, but when Councilmember Stites and I were talking about on this, this on Friday, and we were thinking through what are the timelines of moving forward? We really realized with our local businesses, like every day counts right now, and just knowing a program like this is available to them will make a difference for what they're able to do in December. A lot of the impacted businesses aren't just being impacted by the fact that their ability to serve their customers is greatly restricted. Many of these businesses, twenty percent of their annual revenue is in the next four weeks traditionally, so they're really being doubly impacted. So I appreciate everyone's time tonight to come together, and we just really wanted to be able to, to do this quickly so that our businesses in need are able to get some, some support during December. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we go to questions or description with council, I would like to open it up to the public to to comment on this item number one. If there's any members of the public who would like to comment, please raise your hand in the Zoom format if we have anyone joining us. Ms. Check?
We don't, Mayor. No one's here.
Okay, then we will, then we will close the public comment portion on agenda items and open this discussion up to members of council. Is there discussion? If you please raise your hand, we will have a discussion. Ms. Dozeman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I really appreciate that this is coming before council again. I really hope that we can support our small businesses even further than we already have. I guess I do have a couple of questions as far as are we capping the amount that we give to businesses that may have applied prior? Or are we preventing applicants who have already received funds from the stabilization program from receiving them again, I guess is my only question.
Mr. Goff, do you want to fill that question?
Yeah, that's a good question, Ms. Dozeman, and it's really up to City Council. If you want to follow the procedures from the first two rounds, I believe we did, we capped it at five thousand dollars. But, and if, if a business did not receive the full amount in the first round, they were eligible to receive the additional amount up to five thousand in the second round. I would recommend from staff that we open this up again to all businesses, even those who have already received a potential grant from the city and start from scratch again. It's been several months and this is, it's a, it's a new and different time, so that would be my recommendation to open it up and let everybody be eligible again.
Sorry, I couldn't hear you there. I would, I would agree with that, that because this is a new situation with a new framework for how this is going about, that existing grantees should be eligible to reapply for the, for these funds and I think sticking to that five thousand amount would make it easy for the committee to develop the, the calculations necessary to make it work, so. But I'd also be open to any other ideas people have as far as the, the dollar amount cap.
Ms. Hoppy? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Oh, I am. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My, my internet connection is unstable, but can you hear me rather than not see me?
I can hear you now.
Yeah. Okay, great. I agree, I agree with, with the starting from scratch. I'm okay with the five thousand dollars. I just wanted to ask, though, I, I think that the idea was to specifically target retail and restaurant, and so I just wanted to make sure that we had a discussion around that to make sure we're based on the same page.
Am I, am I not being able to be heard?
We can now. That's a little better.
Okay, I'll, I'll speak up. Sorry to, sorry to hear that. Do I have additional questions or comments from council? Mr. Urban? You're on mute.
You are correct. So the, I think giving the committee a direction that retail and restaurants are priority, I think, is a good way to go about doing that as opposed to coming up with specific industries. We could just tell the committees the ones we want to prioritize, and we can use that as part of the scoring process to wait applicants based on the industries that they're in. The one question I had regarding the criteria of no chains and franchises in the previous grantees, we did have several franchisees that were part of small chains. Ziggy Coffee is one of those that received a, a grant, so when we say no chains or franchises, that, that's pretty definitive. So I didn't know if council had more lax guidance on that, or do we want to stick to no franchises?
And there for Mr. Urban, Mr. Stites.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would actually be okay with franchises because those are independently owned. I know we have, like Ziggy's is independently owned and even some of the McDonald's, I don't know that they would need to apply for it, but so I think that, I don't think we want to be showing out for corporate chains, but I do think that independently owned franchises are a little bit different, especially the smaller ones.
Ms. Haltine?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd agree with Councilmember Stites and appreciate Councilmember Urban's question. I think that, you know, looking at, at businesses that employ twenty-five or fewer people will probably eliminate some of the national big franchises like McDonald's and allow us to focus on more local franchises that probably have more direct economic impact on our cities, so I would be in support of removing franchises but keeping, keeping the chains in there. Sort of a little, a little related question. I'm not sure how it was handled last time, but I know there's an issue, just for a specific example. The Progie Factory and the Mac and Cheesery are two different brick and mortar fronts, but have the same partnership owning it, and I think it would be valuable for us to be able to recognize that they've got, you know, two sets of overhead and two, two staffing level, and I just want to make sure that businesses like that, even though it's the same partnership running them, you know, I'm really delighted they stayed in Wheat Ridge to expand, and I want to make sure businesses like that would be eligible for grants per brick and mortar location and not limited to the fact that it's the same partnership that owns them.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and this might be a silly question, but this is aimed towards Mr. Goff and Mr. Miller. I know that the county was not going to sort of pass on some of the money from the government, and I was just curious where this turn fifty thousand would be coming from and can it come from there safely? Just, just to kind of give us an idea of how this will impact the overall budget.
Yes, we, the county, we did request an additional two hundred and fifty-five thousand from the CARES Act allocation, but they decided not to distribute anymore to any of the cities beyond what was based on population. And so we, we can, we can move some spending around. We, we did have a full spending plan to spend our two point six, Ally, right, two point four or five or almost two point six. We didn't incorporate this third round of grants into that spending plan, but we can, we can move some, some of the spending around and include this into the spending plan, so CARES Act funding would, would be used for this third round. So we would just have, we would use less CARES Act funding for general fund expenses that we were planning to use it for, such as public safety staffing expenses.
So is, is the, it does, is there, is there a loss? I mean, since we've just been through the budget and things like that, is there a direct loss that you could identify?
It, it will impact the, the general fund budget, two hundred and fifty thousand. Yeah.
Thank you.
This is a discussion amongst council. Mr. Urban?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To the question regarding a partnership that owns two different locations, my advice would be that they apply separately under the name of the location. When it comes to the committee's work, when they're looking at one applicant, it's hard to suggest they would get double that amount, but if it's two different locations and two different, you know, P and L, so to speak, I think that's appropriate to have the applicant apply under two different applications. Steve, do you have any other recommendations on that?
No, I agree with you. I think you've covered that. I, I would like to go ask a question under restaurants. Would, would, we have some bars apply last time? Would bars be eligible to apply?
I would hope so.
Okay, just want to make sure.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sort of going to the application. I don't, I don't recall the last application. I remember looking at it when it first came out, but it just, as we start to communicate this, once it's approved, just want to make sure things like, you know, the, if you have two different stores, please do two different applications is clear to them. So that last time we got a handful of calls from, from concerned business owners who were a, a little bit unclear on some of the things, although the committee did a phenomenal job. And the other thing on the application, I talked to Mr. Goff earlier today. I feel it's really important for the committee to, we're, we're looking at taking quarter million dollars out of our city's budget to give to our businesses because of a pandemic and the impacts of the pandemic. I think it's really important that the businesses who are receiving those funds make an affidavit that they are complying with all of the COVID regulations. You know, it's, it's a little bit frustrating to think about, you know, giving money to businesses where, you know, they've been cited for employees not wearing masks and not, you know, enforcing those things. So I know we really don't have much regulatory environment over that, but I hope that on the application, we can ask for them to confirm that they are in fact, complying with all of those regulations and in a statement that it's an important aspect. I mean, we we don't want to be, you know, we're, we're all trying to get on the other side of COVID together, so if that's something, Mr. Urban, you think could be included, I think that would be, that would be good.
If I can answer that, I, I think that the city attorney previously came up with some general language that talked about that they are current on their local taxes, not necessarily county or state taxes, but as far as the cities, cities taxes are concerned, that they're in compliance with all regulations. We can ask them to be more crystal clear on the COVID language that they're adhering to the public health orders currently in place, that kind of language. I, I think that we, we as a committee discussed that in, in general when we're assessing applicants and wanting to, you know, convey that message to them, that the reason that we're doling this money out is to encourage compliance with the public health orders, and it's really hard for a business to comply when they've seen such a dramatic reduction in revenue, so. I think that the previous language was a little bit more vague, but we can clean it up and make it clearer for the COVID regulations.
Thank you.
Additional questions? Before I close the discussion, I ask for a motion. Ms. Haltine?
Sorry, just one more quick thing. I just want to thank staff. When I reached out on Friday morning, I had gotten up and I looked in social media and I'd seen several local businesses, just great community partners, you know, saying that they understood that this happened and that they were going to be doing their best to still serve our community, and they were sad to furlough staff, and and I was really struck that this was happening in real time to our, our, our businesses. And to be able to call, you know, City Manager Goff and to have the conversation and to find out, you know, he and Miss Shack and staff are already having the conversation and we're ready. I just, we're incredibly fortunate to, as a city, to be able to identify a need and be able to get on it, and that happens because we've got, we've got great staff and we have, I think, a pretty active council, and I just really want to recognize everyone because without that, you know, we'd probably be a couple of weeks down the road to do this, and, and those weeks make a difference. So I just really want to thank everyone. I think we're fortunate and a lot of people are going to be better off for it, so just gratitude. That's what I'm thankful for today. Thank you.
Very much. Just for the record, I'd like to welcome Councilwoman Nosler Beck from just before joining us. Thank you. Any additional discussion, Mr. Urban?
To Councilmember Haltine's point, just take note that the U.S. Congress did not cut their Thanksgiving break short to help out with COVID relief, but the Weaver City Council is here and present.
Ms. Haltine, may I have a motion on this item?
Yes. I moved to approve funding in the amount of two hundred and fifty thousand for the purpose of funding phase three of the business stabilization program.
Second? Motion and a second by Mr. Stites. Discussion on the motion. Mr. Urban?
Do we have a general timeframe? I, I know that we, we have to have these monies. Are, are they to be spent by the end of the year or allocated, or what's the timeline for making these payments to the businesses or what, as far as informing the committee, you know, what kind of timeframe we're talking about? Do we have an estimate of what the timeline on this looks like?
Yeah, great question, Mr. Urban. We, we need to have our, the funds out of our hands by December thirty-first, I believe, right? Is that right, Ms. Check? So, you know, they're not gonna, I don't think they're gonna come back and audit the businesses to make sure that they spend the money by the end of the year, as long as we have it gone by December thirty-first. Is that correct, Ms. Check?
Almost December thirtieth, weirdly, December thirtieth.
So, yeah, we could, based on that, we, we haven't put a timeline together, but I, I figured the committee, I don't know if the committee wants to get, get together and let us know what you think is going to work and, and we can, I don't know, Ally, if, if we can speak offline, Mr. Urban, with, with our finance department to determine what it would take to get the checks cut and but we can turn that around very quickly, so. We can work on a timeline if that would be helpful. I, I know Mr. Art reached out to already to, I think, the committee members from the previous couple of rounds, and I think everybody is willing to serve again.
Just waiting to hear back from two, and then I have a phone call with our Public Information Officer, Sarah Spalding, tomorrow morning, and, and we'll discuss dates, working with Mark Colvin, Finance Manager, make sure we can get checks cut by the end of the
You want to work on that? You want to work on a, a schedule for the committee?
Yeah, that's what, it's on my notes here.
Yeah.
Uh, and a discussion on the motion. Ms. Haltine?
Along the lines of timelines, uh, given sort of what we know right now, what do we think the time, a reasonable timeline is for announcing the applications and being able to take a look? I remember last time it was kind of a three-weekish timeline, but we've got holidays and all sorts of things, so just sort of highball, no commitments, but just curious what feels feasible right now.
Hopefully, we can get the application tonight's Monday. By the end of this week, Sarah and I will talk tomorrow morning. There's some changes obviously to the application. We'll want to pass that language by our legal counsel. He had his okay. Probably by the end of this week, we can get it out. Yeah, you're right, this is a, well, maybe the first and next week, because we have Thursday and Friday off. Two-week application process. I'll work with Mark Colvin to see when we need to get the the judging in to get him the final payment information, so we can get it out by the end of the year.
Great, thank you.
I'll be happy. I'll provide that to Mr. Goff, the whole timeline. Once he have it, he can distribute that out to the council.
I would just mention that, given that we have one hundred and sixty-one previous recipients of funds, once we email that group out, we're going to have a significant number of applications that will come in on that, so I think it's important to continue to put it out there and broadcast it widely, but I don't think we need a very large window to receive applicants because we're going to have more than we have money available to, to fund, given the current applicants, if, you know, given if half of them apply.
Question on the motion. Saying none, we'll, we'll go to a vote. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by raising your hands, and will the clerk please count the votes?
Mr. Mayor, the motion has passed unanimously.
Thank you very much. Thank you, council, for your careful consideration of that item. That concludes our business items on this. I'd like to go now to City Managers Matters, Mr. Goff.
Nothing this evening. Happy Thanksgiving to everybody. Go make your pies, and Amanda Weaver has some turkeys available, I think.
Okay, thank you so much. The Attorney's Matters, Mr. Doll?
Nothing tonight, other than have a Thanksgiving, have a safe one and enjoyable.
Thank you very much. We will go to Elected Officials Matters. Any, any elected officials with matters, Mr. Stites?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just something real quick. I got an email today from Mr. Kirkpatrick and from Mr. Eaton. And the question or the idea was about helping our businesses a little bit by maybe getting rid of or I don't know, doing, doing something with our liquor occupation taxes and some of our liquor authority fees, because that directly affects, I think, restaurants and bars and obviously liquor stores, but so I wasn't sure if we had any support for that or if that would even be something that would help any of the businesses out. Is there Patrick or, or Mr. Doll or?
They've probably already paid. Those are an annual thing. I guess it would, it would impact them maybe next year. That's the first I've heard of it. We could look into it and bring it back if you'd like, but I believe those are all Mr. Patrick, or maybe Ally, do you know? I think we received those revenues already for this year for most of the bars. It would help them next year, I think, if we, if you want to waive their, their annual fee for next year, maybe, or, or delay it or cut it in half or
How much is that usually, do you know?
I honestly don't. I was just going to say, I don't, I think it's a different, based on the class of liquor license they have. So there's, there's a different graduated schedule. It's anywhere. You know, it can be a cup about, maybe Mr. Patrick has his hand up, maybe he knows.
It's as large as thirteen hundred dollars in many cases. The other suggestion was that, that, and I have no idea whether this is feasible in the, in an accounting audit vein, but the idea was we could give them a credit against future city sales taxes or their liquor license fees for next year. So that they would basically not get the money back, but they would get a credit for the next time they have taxes or a license fee due. That, that's just an idea, another way that we could make that happen for the, for those businesses.
Is that something maybe we could get on, like our, our next study session or our next meeting agenda? Maybe staff could take a look at that. I, I don't know if there'd be any support from council, from other counselors to look at that.
I would like, Mr. Mayor? I'd like to kind of understand what the total revenue that we're receiving from those various sources are and, you know, how, you know, what, what are those revenues currently being used for, if anything, if they have anything attached to them, and what it would look like to do a one-year credit or waiver or rebate or whatever the appropriate term would be.
Mr. Miller, are those years that are readily available in the legislature's office, you know?
I'm sorry, was that a question to me, Mr. Mayor?
No, I, I was talking to Mr. Miller, but I'm not sure that I'm, maybe my audio is not very good tonight.
Our, our liquor license fees are, it's, they're not, it's not a huge number. It's about eighteen thousand dollars a year. Trying to see what are the liquor occupation. Trying to see what are the liquor occupation. And, and Mr. Urban, these are, these, the monies just go in the general funds. Um, so they're used for general fund expenditures. They're not tied to anything specific.
City manager, it looks like liquor occupational taxes about seventy K budgeted and um, license fee to by eighteen.
So, just under a hundred thousand total.
Yeah, that, that answers my questions. I, my main concern is whether there was any sort of statutory obligation relative to these funds or um, if they're general funds, so.
Just a quick note that we brought this forward now because we thought it might in some way impact the committee's decisions about further grants. Is it, I, I, I'm not suggesting you should or should not. All I'm saying is that if a, a liquor occupancy tax is going to be relieved of, say, a thousand dollars, um, would the committee want to consider that as part of the support for the business? Again, I'm not suggesting you should or shouldn't. I'm just saying, we wanted to make sure you had that thought in mind when you go about this.
Uh, uh, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, Mr. Doll.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, one thing the council probably should consider is liquor licenses and occupation taxes, of course, affect a segment of the business community. But the city, of course, imposes various taxes and registration fees, et cetera, on, on a range of businesses. Some of which will be making application to, for the, for the grants. And, and I guess the, the only consideration I suggest from the council is that while it's true that restaurants and bars have high profile in terms of the effect of the COVID restrictions on that class of business, there are other businesses as well that are affected and that might well be applying for grants. And uh, city should perhaps, if there's going to be waiving of fees and whatnot, city might consider uh, whether that's across the board or not. Uh, and its effect on advantaging, you know, one set of businesses or another who are also paying their fees and uh, not to say that, that bars and restaurants aren't especially affected because they are the liquor license fees. But they're one category of business amongst a number of categories that are.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I would just like to say that I think we should move forward with, with what we've already decided on with the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. If something comes down from the federal government later and we have an opportunity to do more grant funding, then I think we should keep that separate. Um, a hundred thousand dollars is part of our main budget and um, you know, what staff spends months preparing to bring to us that we spend months reviewing. And then, and then we approve it. So I would hate to start taking line items out of that. Um, but I, I think the way that we do with the grant is the right way to do it. So um, I'd rather that we move forward with what we have. And if we have more money later, then we can do that, but maintain all of our licensing and, and taxing the way it is.
Hand your hand up, and you were also speaking on Elected Officials Matters. So do you have some more um, to contribute on this item?
Um, no, I don't. I just, I, I had a question for Mr. Doll, um, as far as if we waive the, um, the liquor fees, um, and the other businesses, are there other large fees for businesses out there that, um, are affected right now?
That will be probably a better question for, for the finance folks than I. Uh, I know liquor does pay more. There's no question that they, because they, they have not only occupation tax, but annual licensing fees that are considerably more than a business license. For example, I was expecting you might be asking me whether there's any problem calling out liquor licenses separately with that kind of treatment. And, and my answer is no. Council was able to and has the power to make the decision that this is a particularly affected industry. And for that reason, we'll grant you the following breaks. However, they end up being designed.
This, Mr. Stice, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, can I? Go ahead. Uh, Mr. Stice, yeah, there, I mean, there's, there really aren't too many other categories of business fees. I mean, all, every business has a twenty-dollar annual business license fee. Um, you know, we have, um, uh, admissions, admis, amusement, that's a tax, um, for our admissions. Amusement type businesses, bowling alleys and such, um, our pawn shop, um, uh, businesses have a, a, a five thousand dollar um, license fee every year. Um, that's about it, though. That, you know, there's an arborist license fee, pretty small, pretty small um, number. Um, I think that's about it.
Well, I mean, if there's, if there's um, any consensus to kind of move that forward to another study session or something to look at, maybe reducing those fees or um, rebating or getting rid of them for the year or something for those bars and restaurants, because I think that is a high fee and you're talking about eighteen hundred dollars could be the salary for somebody for that month. So that could make a difference for January, but um, if there's consensus to move that forward, I'd like to take a look at it, but if not, that's okay as well. Thank you.
Well, we had, we had a couple of hands raised, Mr. Urban and, and Ms. Hulteen. Are you wishing to sponsor a, uh, a, a call to go to a study session to, to look at this?
Yeah, and I also have another comment as well.
Okay, then, uh, Ms. Hoppy, it sounds like that, uh, that we have consensus to put this on for a study session. And then, Mr. Urban.
Thank you. I, I would suggest that, that as was stated previously, that we should segregate any uh, revenue that would come from this type of analysis uh, away from the committee's work, because the, the committee is really uh, there to, to help determine the best expenditure of the, the two hundred and fifty K. And that, that works a lot smoother than uh, businesses that are receiving a tax credit or some waiver of license fees. And I, I personally believe we should uh, require the businesses applied to have any sort of tax relief, uh, as opposed to just a blanket uh, removal of a particular tax or fee. And so, if someone wants to pay it, they can pay it, but if they were seeking relief, they can apply for that assistance, so. Uh, but I would just ask that the committee's work be separated from that.
Thank you. Uh, I just have a question regarding sort of logistics and timing. Um, I'm assuming that, that these are fees that are paid and due right around the first of the year. Is that correct?
Yeah, most of them, I, I, the, um, I, I believe the liquor license fee is due at renewal. The liquor occupation tax, I think we don't necessarily receive a, a lot of them till the end of the year, so I, I don't think it's, it's, there's one specific date, Ms., Ms. Hulteen. I think it depends on, um, when the liquor license was originally issued.
So I, I definitely support having this study session. I'm just wondering if there isn't the possibility of doing it in January or February and looking at it as a rebate after we have a better sense of if there is some sort of federal package coming. I feel like we might have more information about both the impacts of the shutdowns as well as what the, um, what the landscape looks like for the next, you know, the first three to six months of twenty twenty-one in terms of other relief packages. Um, so so if looking at it from not a waiving it at the, the front end, but rather rebating it back as an option, my preference would be to look at it, um, you know, in early twenty twenty-one as an option. Uh, but I would look to Mr. Stites to get his thoughts on that, since it's his, his item.
And I think the sooner we can discuss it, maybe the better, but I don't have an issue as a rebate rather than a uh, a credit or, or however you want to put it. Um, and I, I agree with Mr. Urban that it should definitely be something that you apply for. If it's, if you're in that sort of hardship, um, then, then that's something you apply for, not something that necessarily may be given, so. Um, but yeah, I, I, I guess I see that more as maybe a product of that study session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I would just ask if, if staff felt like they could get it done quick enough. We have room on the December twenty-first study session. Um, and then other than that, we will have a, a January fourth study session or a February first study session. So I'm just keeping those in mind for planning.
And we've, we've, I think I've, we've added a few things, Ms. Hoppy, since, um, you and I last spoken. Um, I'm just trying to pull up the agenda, so some of those might be getting yeah, twenty, I think we could still get it on the twenty-first potentially.
All right, why don't we, why don't you take that as a sidebar and see what your, what your calendar looks like and uh, see as soon as we can schedule this in. Okay? Are there any other elected officials matters? Uh, Ms. Weaver.
I just wanted to clarify that I don't have any more turkeys at the farm, which is, so I don't get a lot of phone calls. Thanks. And don't forget to thank your turkey if you are having turkey this Thanksgiving.
Thank you very much, Ms. Hutchinson.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to wish everyone a safe Thanksgiving, and I've already started eating pumpkin pie.
That's good.
Yeah.
You have a little orange cast here, skin. I can see it already. All right, any other, uh, public, uh, elected officials matters? Going once, going twice. All right. Well, thank you all for joining us tonight. Uh, it is the week of Thanksgiving. I hope everyone is, is thankful, uh, for their situation here. We, uh, we have, um, a lot of work to do together, but we're working together and staying safe. So anyway, have a great Thanksgiving holiday, be safe, and we will see you, uh, at our next meeting. Good night, all.